All right, good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order for Tuesday, May 11th. And the first item is the approval of the agenda. And we do have two agenda additions. One is a request for a new liquor license for the city of Barnesville Willow Creek Golf Course. And the other is a proclamation for Law Enforcement Week.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with both additions.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Mosel, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Do we have any citizens to be heard today on items not on the agenda?
You're not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, nothing online. All right. All right, we'll move on then to the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Approval of the minutes from April 27th.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Okay, our weekly COVID-19 update. Kathy McKay and Jamie, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Let's see, so we handed out the weekly data. So you can see that the number of cases are up just a little bit, both in Minnesota and Clay, but just cumulative cases, not active cases. We had 92 deaths now in Clay County. There's 91 last week, so another reported one on our data, a few more across the state of Minnesota. Our active cases, the good news is we're still seeing a decline in those. It was 167 last week, and now we're at 129. So that's great. We're also seeing a reduction in our hospitalizations. So across the state of Minnesota, they're about 30% down over the last two weeks. So that's really good, that we're seeing the numbers go down. And part of that, of course, is the number of people that are getting vaccinated. So that's the number of vaccines we get out, and the measures, the continued public health measures are helping that. So the cumulative active, or the active cases are on the next page, Clay County Active Cases by Age. So it's the 22, 24 that continues to be the most active cases. And then the cumulative ones, the highest now is that 30 to 34. And again, that will vary as we go along in those age categories, but it's the younger group that are still, we're still seeing the cases in. The cumulative cases by zip code, we added that a couple of weeks ago. So there's an increase of the cases in Moorhead is the largest number, of course, and a few more in Dilworth increased from the previous week. And then we talked about the hospitalizations. They don't have the specifics for Sanford and Essentia on the Fargo side, other than they're, continue to not see the increases and are seeing some decreases now in the hospitalizations and ICU hospitalizations as well. We've heard about breakthrough cases, and those are the ones where people are immunized, and then they have a breakthrough case. There's about 1,200 that the state has data about, and that's 1,200 out of about 1.6 million people. So 700 of those just experienced symptoms, and 70 out of the 1,200 were hospitalized. So it's still, you know, a low number of breakthrough cases, but they are happening. The variant cases are still circulating, so we're seeing that, of course, in variant cases with people that have had some international travel. So about 23% of the Brazil variant was associated with international travel, and about 28% the South African variant. So some of that is still circulating because of that international travel. But we're watching that because it appears that there still are a little bit of a threat for their severity and illness. And of course, we see that Mexico is still a high-risk destination, and obviously, you know, we've seen the news on the devastation and tragedy in India with their, with the COVID variants. I think that's all I have for now, unless anyone has questions on the data. And Jamie will talk about our vaccinations.
Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Well, we continue to bring the data from Minnesota to you for Clay County. And looking at the people with at least one vaccine dose in Clay County, we're at 39.9% according to the Minnesota data. And we talk every week about that we are feeling that that's not a true reflection of what's going on in Clay County because of those that are served on the North Dakota side, and then people who have completed the vaccine series, 34.2%. And then we have the breakdown by age group to see. The 16, 17-year-olds are only at this point able to receive Pfizer vaccine, and we're at 292. I believe we are at 270. So not a big increase in those that are accessing the Pfizer vaccine there. And then where we seem to be the strongest in Clay County, the 50-plus with at least one dose of vaccine, 40, 50 to 64, 48.4%, and the 65 and greater, 74.9%. So that's where we're seeing the best response and reporting in Clay County. And then just compared to the statewide data, and in statewide in Minnesota, people with at least one dose of vaccine are at 60.3%, and then those with a completed vaccine series are at 49.1%. And then the age breakdown there as well, so that. And then we did bring the zip code data again for you to just take a look at by zip code and the response for vaccinations. And then what we do each time, each week is we bring you the doses administered by Clay County Public Health, and we're just over 14,000 that we have administered ourselves, 14,041. Last week, I mentioned that we continued to see a decline in first doses. And so last week, our total doses administered were down to 291, and we were sitting well over 1,000. So we've seen a decline. Our team met this week to talk about the slow decline in those first doses are what we're seeing is very limited second doses. So the uptake is less. We are going out to some locations to offer vaccine. We've been to some of the schools for the 16, 17-year-olds. And you've probably heard that Pfizer has been approved for the 12 to 15-year-olds as well, Governor saying this week. We don't easily access Pfizer, but are expecting that we will get some. We had a conversation, we meet weekly with the school superintendents, and we had a conversation last week about opportunities to use that vaccine in the schools, summer school programs that they're having, and then also summer activities. So we're anticipating being able to serve them through the districts.
Jamie, are you planning on Clay County Public Health administering some of those shots, or are they looking to go to other facilities for that, for these kids?
So are you talking about for the kids? We are. Hopefully, there'll be a lot of opportunities, but for us, we would really focus on going to the communities and the school districts and serving them through their activities and summer school programs, more than likely.
Will there be a process then that the schools will go through for parent approval?
Yes. And we did that same process for the 16, 17-year-olds. So we pushed that out through them, parents' consent. And, you know, we did have some at the school, but the majority of the parents were bringing the students to the Yum! comps themselves, so. And then this week, we have 550 doses. Not that we think that we will use all that, but since last week, we've been advertising Johnson &amp; Johnson, and we do have that available to sign up and also to walk in as well.
So you have, so people can just walk in now?
Yes, we've been advertising each week that, you know, they have a few options. They can register in advance, they can use the QR code when they get there and register, or they can walk in and we'll do a paper copy. The paper copy's not the most ideal for our staff that have to enter it in, but we're trying to be flexible and have been doing that weekly. Johnson &amp; Johnson is on Thursday from 10 to 3:00. We have some Moderna vaccine for first and second doses, but also Johnson &amp; Johnson available.
Is Thursday the only day?
Thursday's the only day. We're actually doing a clinic on Wednesday as well. We've got some Pfizer second doses that we're doing, and then also Moderna.
Okay. Commissioner Gross.
I mean, it shows that the people that aren't vaccinated, the younger ones and stuff, are working class, pretty much what you can say. But when we're open with these clinics, we're always open during the day while they're working, probably. Do we have any clinics in the evening hours that, like from 6:00 to 9:00 or something like that? Do we do any of that stuff?
We haven't gone that late. We've gone as late as 6:00. Now, this week on Wednesday, we have a clinic until 5:00, but last week, we had a clinic until 6:00, mostly because when we have those doses left in the bottle, so we don't waste them, we work really hard. It takes us additional staff time and effort in order to use those doses so they don't go to waste. So, but again, you know, that's something we could certainly consider if that's a barrier. But...
I mean, I don't know if we get more people or not, but it seems like our working people, I mean, the age group, younger group and stuff like that, they're the ones that are not getting the shots, but we're not making it available to them probably when they're available. We expect them to take off from work, or, I don't know.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, we have offered it to businesses. So particularly with the shifts, we'll go out to the businesses and have done that. In fact, this morning, Cheryl went to a business and had to be there at 6:00 to meet the staff that were on the night shift. So we are trying to be very flexible in getting that out to them.
Good point, very good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for your continued good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, you want to come up?
Good morning. We just got one item on here today. It would be a request for approval to advertise for three box culvert or bridge replacement projects. We've got one on our county system that we package together with two township structures. The county does oversee bridges for the townships. We inspect them, and then as we also, we work with them on removals. So they have a separate gas tax-funded program. It's called the Town Bridge Program. I guess the dollars come through the county to the townships. It's available only on their system. And we've got one that we've been working with in Craigness Township and one in Morkan Township. And we start the process early with them. As we, as they become deficient and eligible for replacement, we bring them in early. We design the project, sit down with them, show them our estimate, and then if they want to proceed, then we go to bid letting. So that's kind of where we're at now, looking at a proposed bid letting of June 8th.
All right. What's the board's whispers?
Make a motion to approve the bid letting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Okay. I wonder, let's take the one agenda item, Steve, for Barnesville, and then we'll do our committee reports.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Thank you for taking on this addition. After the agenda came out this past week, Willow Creek Municipal Golf Course reached out, reached out to us. Their current alcohol, our liquor license is going to expire at the end of the week. And so their hope is that we would get approval through this board today so they can have beer on Saturday.
Oh, county commission to the rescue.
Make a motion to support the request.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mosel, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Where'd they start with last week?
Don't start with me.
No, okay. Dave, you want to start this week?
Yeah. This week, or this last week, on Wednesday, the 5th, Commissioner Campbell and County Administrator Larson and I met with the Minnesota partners from the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. We're updating them on the, just trying to keep those practitioners, the city administrators, managers, and chiefs, and fire chiefs, and sheriff up to speed on the discussions that are taking place, on general issues, particularly on the plans to develop a new dispatch center. We're going to set up regular meetings to keep everybody in the loop so we're all on the same page. Later that day, I met with Kimberly Savageau. She gave me a briefing to kind of get me up to speed. We're going to have the records, Kimberly's the county records recorder. We're going to have a records office compliance fund meeting on the 20th, and she wanted to give me the information I need to be aware of what is going to take place at that meeting. She did a very good job, gave me a very informative presentation on that. The next day, on the 6th, went to a substance abuse discussion with cross municipalities on tobacco ordinances that are out there, myself and Commissioner Gross. We're there from, virtually there for the county. Steve Lindis and Chuck Hendricks with City Moorhead, Chad Olson and Julie Nash from Dilworth. Moorhead indicated that they're set to direct city attorney to craft an ordinance for review in late May or early June. They are looking at banning all flavored tobacco and vape with exemptions for Native American practices. Dilworth had a meeting last night. I'm not real clear on exactly what happened at the end of it, but they were indicating that they had a consensus to deal with vaping issues. Other than that, other flavored tobacco products or nicotine products, they did not feel they had a consensus. We also had a brief discussion, recent changes on the under-21 tobacco laws in the state of Minnesota have had consequences or penalties only for the sale to somebody under 21. The possession by someone under 21 currently has no enforcement or penalties attached. And we discussed possibly setting up a restorative justice process for that. Friday, the 7th, myself and Commissioner Kaylee went to the press conference at Moorhead Fire Station 1 with Senator Tina Smith. The overall conversation was about advances in providing funding for infrastructure. Part of what we discussed there, obviously, was the diversion, but also the 11th Street Underpass. Monday, the 10th, yesterday, we rejoined the discussion on House File 922, the juvenile, the legislation that's currently pending, that's been put forward involving strip searches and involving disciplinary time, room time in our facility. Our superintendent, James O'Donnell, was there along with Josh Swanson, myself, Commissioner Campbell, County Administrator Larson, County Attorney Brian Melton. Representative Keeler was there with Curtis Shanklin, who's an assistant commissioner with the DOC, and Katrina Dexter, who works for the DOC. It was a virtual meeting. All of the local people were here. Commissioner Keeler and the DOC people were remote. I really don't know how to characterize, there were no results in the conversation. I think it's moot point at this point. It looks like this legislation is not going to get to the floor and not going to be voted The position of the Department of Corrections right now is arguable. I don't know what their position is after this meeting, but we really didn't have any effective results from the meeting. And that concludes my report.
All right, Commissioner Kaylee?
On Wednesday, the 5th, I was able to attend the drug court graduation. Those are always really great. The gentleman that graduated this last week is working in the auto industry. And one of the things he said when he was sharing his story is that the best day of his life was when he was arrested in Dilworth because that was the turning point for him when he decided to make a change and seek full recovery. And he went after it with tenacity. He was never sanctioned once in the program, and I was really pleased to have him as a member of our community and contributing here. So congratulations to him. Also, on Wednesday, the 5th, I attended the Moorhead Planning Commission meeting. There was an approval for a request from Storemore to amend the comprehensive plan and rezone property at 825 46th Avenue South. This is a project that's sort of been in process since 2016. It's going to have a self-storage facility, and then there's also some additional space for some offices or some other buildings on there to be determined. That's not determined yet. There was also a presentation on the 17th Street Corridor project. For those that aren't familiar, that's the really wide street that runs by Steenerson Lumber and Park Christian School, and it just kind of seems odd. So there was a lengthy process. It ended up being longer than they expected, gathering more community input than was expected. But after all was said and done, they came to a plan that residents have approved, which includes a shared use path along one side of the street. And so that's going to be a wider pathway, and it will connect up to the Heartland Trail, which will be on the north side of the, is it 15th Avenue up there? Also, there's a lot of sections of that length of roadway that don't have sidewalks all the way on both sides, so there will be sidewalk connectivity on that other side, making this a much more walkable pedestrian-friendly corridor. And in the same heart of making it more pedestrian-friendly, because we do have a school there, there's lots of businesses along that corridor, they're adding curb extensions for increased pedestrian visibility in those intersections. And more information on that project can be found online, but it looks like a great plan.
Commissioner Kaylee, before you move on, I wanted to talk a little bit about that 46th Avenue South piece that you talked about. That is also, I believe, within Clay County jurisdiction because of the overlay. Was there a recommendation to talk with Clay County Planning on that piece, if you recall? Are you talking about the storage unit right on 46th and 75?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have a note about that.
Okay.
But I can check.
Why don't you double-check with our planning director? Because as you noted, that really was a conversation in 2016. We wanted to make sure that the city of Moorhead and Clay County were on the same page as that, and we've really been flexible with what that is, just...
Well, we altered it, overlaid it.
We had altered it to make sure that that fit in there, and so make sure and talk to Matt about that.
Okay. Thank you. Thursday, May 6th, we had the Joint Powers Meeting, and Commissioner Campbell and Steve were with me on that meeting. I had an internet issue, and so I missed the very beginning of that meeting when there was a presentation from Matt Buss, so maybe one of them could fill you in on that. MetroCog, which is our Fargo-Moorhead Regional Transportation Planning Organization, did an update on some of their projects that they've been looking at. So they talked about the Highway 75 reconstruction. The study is completed for that, and also Highway 10. These are state-funded. And one of the interesting pieces for that, I thought, was after the 11th Street Underpass project is done, Highway 10, where it has that jog, will now go over to 11th Street instead of up 8th, and that should help with a lot of our truck traffic through that congested There, it looks like there is a future study coming up for Highway 10 through Dilworth as well. They talked about the Heartland Trail a little bit as a priority, but of note, that is not funded yet, but all local entities have agreed that this is a priority for us, so. On Thursday, the 6th, I also had the Children's Mental Health LAC. And since this last week was Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, we kind of just went through with the agencies associated with that group to talk about what went really well last year, was such a crazy year that we had. Everybody noted that it was really great that mental health services didn't stop ever. They changed, they pivoted in how those services were delivered, but they never stopped. And also, with that pivot and with the change in waivers so that practitioners could meet with their clients virtually, this increased access for mental health services in our rural areas where transportation is a major, major issue for a lot of people. Several of the agencies are looking at increasing their staffing, and everybody was just really thankful that despite the challenges of last year that children's mental health was brought to the forefront, and that the importance of these issues is being recognized and stigmas are being decreased for accessing these services. Also, on Thursday, we had the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County Annual Meeting. There was an election and reelection of board members, and the Clay County Heritage Award was given to the three researchers from the Vest Hallmark Museum in Norway who had done the Red River Girl Project. This involved an exhibit here in Clay County as well as at the Vest Hallmark Museum in Norway, and there was a beautiful book published. And the language in the book is bilingual, so it's both in English and Norwegian. This was really a group effort, but spearheaded by those researchers from Norway about an immigrant who had come to the Red River Valley, and her life story and artwork. And I encourage everybody to check out that book. It is available at the public library. Commissioner Ebinger commented on our, the press conference we attended with Tina Smith on Friday. I also want to note that while we did talk mostly about physical infrastructure, we did also talk about childcare as infrastructure and the great need that we have for that across the state. Tina noted that she is working on initiatives so that families would only pay up to 7% of their income for childcare, which would totally change the lives of many, many of our families in the area. That proposal would be that the rest of those care costs would be funded by other means, and we'll see what happens there. But it was good to hear that that was on her radar. But it was good to hear that that was on her radar. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gross.
Thursday, we had the Building Committee. They were discussing further options on the storage facility we plan on building up in 15th Avenue. Also on Thursday with Jason McCoy that Mr. Ebinger talked about, and Dilworth did approve the sale of electronic devices last night. I also attended the Historical Society that Janet talked about. Very interesting presentation there by Theodore Roosevelt there. I don't know how that guy talked for an hour and didn't look like he had any script, but did a great job. Friday, I attended the Tim Dent Retirement. I think as of his time, right now, he's on his way to Wyoming, I think, today. So he's to his new home. Also, Friday afternoon, I had a meeting with a citizen from Hit it All Along with Kirk Rosenberg. Kirk helped me out with that. She had some situations at recycling and stuff. This morning, we had a short meeting on Felton Recycling about the building they want to put up there. Those are my meetings.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the MetroCog Policy Executive, the MetroCog Executive Committee. We talked a little bit about the budget moving forward. We've always based the percentages on what each municipality and county pays based on population, and so we're talking a little bit about what the new results from the census, if that will change. It looks as though Morehead and Clay County's percentage may drop, you know, a percentage or two, so we'll just see how that comes. And I think the reality is if we don't have those numbers and information by September, we may just wait to apply that to the previous, or the following year. I think it kind of goes with the same thing that we're dealing with with dispatch, from what I recall. I had the Minnesota Joint Powers, Minnesota Joint Powers of the Red River Basin Commission. We talked about, thank you, what each community is doing in regards to mitigation efforts with environmental issues. Had an update from our planning director. That was the first time that we'd met for over a year, so we really had a lot of bases to cover in terms of those issues. I also attended the Clay County Comprehensive Plan update with, we brought in some environmental partners, people from different environmental groups, the Soil and Water Conservation District, to just get their feedback and input on our comp plan to make sure we're taking those issues into account. I really appreciate the fact to bring those people in because we didn't have as much input from those as possible as that we did before. And then also, the following day, I had that same meeting only with different aggregate partners in the community. As you know, both of those have different issues, but making sure that we take into account both of those going forward with our comp plan is important. I had a meeting yesterday on finance reporting for Community Action. They will be changing a little bit the documents that they will provide the board for the finance reporting. I think more information to make it easier to read. As you know, some of these boards have so many large grants coming in and out, sometimes it's difficult to track, so making sure that we have it as transparent as possible is a great option. And I also want to give my thanks to the Finance Department at Community Action. They've always been very open to any feedback and changes, making sure that they have the board as clear understanding as possible. Yesterday, I attended the Minnesota Rural Caucus meeting. We just had one item of notes to kind of give feedback on for the legislative session. They are dealing with some deer processing legislation and making sure that we're taking into account the folks that do it only seasonally for deer season, making sure that their point of view is heard as well. This weekend, I had several phone calls from different businesses. One that extended their appreciation for the rounds of support that Clay County offered to help them through the shutdowns. But a new item, as I think you've probably heard in the news, has come up, is there is such a workforce shortage. There are at least five restaurants in Clay County that will now be closing at least one day a week to deal with the shortages in workers and employees. And I just think that now is really the time, if you are looking for a job, Clay County is hiring, so that will be interesting to follow going forward. And then this morning, because Commissioner Gross lives or has felt in his district, we did talk a little bit, just based forwarded your information, Kevin, what you'd shared at the solid waste. And since we're kind of the newbies in terms of the breakdowns and what historically we've done, solid waste staff shared with us kind of how it goes. So as you had noted, there will be more from that committee level to move forward in terms of what the recycling needs are there. That concludes my reports, I believe.
On May 4th, I had a diversion executive meeting. We did talk, we did go over the PMC overview, that's just a project management consultant. And they obviously have a large staff that's involved with this project, and they wanted to be sure to let everybody know that a number of their staff have moved in our residence here in the local area now working on this project. We received an executive director's update about community meetings, meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers regarding, there's still some issues with fish passage issues that they're trying to work out. And then also, there was a local contract given for videography that's going to be coming up, and it looks like we're, the P-3 contract is likely to be awarded in the June Then the, on the 5th, we did have, as Commissioner Ebinger mentioned, we did have the meeting regarding the dispatch with, and that one was centered around fees that are part of each entity's, what they include in the billing. So there was some discussion about what are the, what are the proper fees to be having. Also, we had the dispatch meeting that day that dealt with, for our Minnesota members, and Commissioner Ebinger reported on that, so I don't have anything more to add on that. Thursday morning, we had the Joint Powers, Clay County Joint Powers, meeting. Commissioner Kaylee reported on that. We did get, receive an update from, on Matt Bus and some changes that are, route changes that are impacted in Morehead and Dilworth. I shouldn't say impacted, they're just, I think they look at them as positive changes that are being made to better serve the people. And we received a report from Cindy Gray from MinDOT.
MetroCog.
Or from MetroCog, excuse me. And then we had a quick update on COVID. Then that morning, we had a Building Committee meeting, and we discussed, as Commissioner Gross said, potential alternatives to what we're currently looking at for storage facilities to replace what's on 15th Avenue North. Yesterday morning, I was part of the meeting with the state representatives and Department of Corrections people and our staff and Commissioner Ebinger regarding issues pertaining to those House and Senate files that are being talked about, and we continue to stress our concerns with that legislation. I don't know that our concerns have been, have changed any regarding the current proposal. And so as Commissioner Ebinger said, you know, it's likely that, looks like that's probably not going to go through this year, which hopefully would give us more time to come to a resolution that we can all live with in terms of that facility. That concludes my report. Steve?
I think, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated, I met with Matt Johnson and Adam Oldenburg from MetroCog in regards to a comprehensive plan. They've been working with all of our department heads to ensure a comprehensive look for the county's needs. On the 5th, I participated in the Red River Dispatch discussion that's been addressed with by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Ebinger. On the 5th, I participated in the Strive for Excellence Retreat Planning. We worked on the agenda. There was a survey that went out to our participants, commissioners, and our department heads and supervisors, and so we're asking a little bit of pre-work can be done before that. I think we gave everyone about a week to provide that feedback, and that will be a point of discussion for our group at the end of this month. I participated on the Joint Powers Meeting that has been addressed by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Kaylee. On the 6th, I also had participated in the Building Committee Meeting that Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gross have discussed. On the 7th, I met with Darren and Anna from Human Resources on some retreat discussions, and that afternoon, met with Dave Overbow on a series of issues, and also participated in Tim Dent's open house retirement. Yesterday, I did participate in the meeting with Representative Keeler that both Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Ebinger have spoken about, and also had some additional discussions with James O'Donnell, Josh Swanson, and Mr. Melton. And met with Darren and Mark Sloan on some additional retreat planning. Darren's going to be on vacation for the next week, and so we wanted to try to get some things in place before he left. Just a few updates. Yesterday afternoon, the U.S. Treasury did finally put out its guidance, and so I did forward that on to the committee. The guidance is only 151 pages, and so we'll have to work our way through that here over the coming days. Also, there's also a process which we can request the funds for Clay County, and I'll be working on it this afternoon. The CARES money was a matter of filling out one form. The federal government has a little bit longer of a process, and so we should know here soon when that money will be coming in. I think we all got notification, the AMC District Meeting in Fergus Falls is going to be held June 18th. It's going to be in-person. It's going to be held at the Big Wood Events Center, the hotel in Fergus Falls. There is going to be a virtual option on July 21st, but that will not be with our district, but it will be a statewide option for that opportunity. Yesterday, there was information put out from the DMV with the deadline for the Real ID and being extended. They're going to move to all appointments for Real IDs and Enhanced IDs only, starting June 1st. As we have evaluated some of the challenges in the length of time that people are spending in line, what really is kind of increasing that wait is those walk-ins. Those walk-ins are taking at least a half an hour, and it's not uncommon to have 10 to 15 people walking on a day, each day. And so the hope is that by making an appointment, they've also added some additional times. And with not having to, Real ID be in place until May of 2023, the hope is that we can do it in a orderly way that will positively impact everyone who's there to get service. Worked with Citizen and Dave Overbow this past week on a question about ditch mowing. We also, we're invited this morning, the Sheriff's Department's going to be having an award ceremony at the Law Enforcement Center on June 11th at 11:00 a.m. We'll have three deputies that will be receiving Commendable Service Awards, Life Saving Award, and a Disregarded Serve Medal. And so with that, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Brian, do you have anything? Chan?
All right. So we have the next item. We have the law enforcement proclamation. And Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. It dawned on me today that we used to, as the Joint Powers, have Law Enforcement Appreciation Week in January, and because of COVID, for some reason, we just forgot to do this and watched the city of Morehead last night do this, and I think it's really important that we also do this proclamation today. A proclamation for Law Enforcement Week, whereas Clay County is represented by law enforcement officers from the Morehead Police Department, Dilworth Police Department, Glendon Police Department, Barnesville Police Department, Holly Police Department, and the Clay County Sheriff's Office. Whereas members of law enforcement play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens in our community, and whereas every day throughout our nation, men and women in uniform selflessly put their lives on the line, many of whom have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities, and whereas law enforcement officers bravely and selflessly risk their lives to protect our community from dangerous and uncertain situations through their faithful, loyal, and dedicated service, and whereas acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens for our officers provide them needed encouragement and support to confront the intense situations that they face every day. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through the 15th as Law Enforcement Appreciation Week in Clay County, and urge all citizens to join us to honor those men and women who are serving and have served valiantly and courageously to make Clay County a better place to live, work, and raise a family, dated this, the 11th day of May, 2021.
All right. That's, I'm assuming that is a motion by Commissioner Mojo?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do you have a second? Second by Commissioner Ebinger? Do we have any further discussion? Dave?
I'd just like to point out, I really appreciate Commissioner Mojo bringing this up. May 15th is a very important day to me. I was a police officer for 40 years, and I lost five comrades in that time to violence. We don't want to have five personally that I worked with. We don't want to forget with all the, very often justified questioning what the role of police officers is in our society right now, that we have men and women out there 24/7, 365, who are willing to step up. And one of the things we do on Police Memorial Week is remember the ones that didn't come So I appreciate Commissioner Mojo remembering that for us this week. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? None? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It was the same. Motion carried. All right. We're now on our 915 item, a request from Sarah Peterson to waive penalties and fees for late taxes. Is Sarah here?
She's in the hallway.
Sarah? Would you like to come up to these chairs here, please, and make sure you speak into a microphone? And there's a little, there's a little button you can press to make sure that the green light comes on, please, when you speak.
It's on.
Okay. So we have received your request. We have the information from last week, and for some reason, you were unable to be here or weren't here last week, and so we have it back on today. We've certainly got information from the city of Glendon regarding your request, and so this is your opportunity now to add any additional information that you may want to share with us outside of what your written request was.
Sarah?
And you can feel free to, if you... And you can feel free to, if you're comfortable removing your mask to speak, you can feel free to do so.
You want to say anything?
And then identify yourself, too, please.
My name is Darrell Shatun.
Pardon me?
Darrell Shatun.
Okay. Has that got a green light on that microphone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good. All right. Okay, so.
Anything you want to add? What do you ask?
Oh, I'm not sure what was said at the last meeting because I wasn't able to get here in time. But we basically would just, my family likes to try to put our lives back together and our home back together after the pandemic.
All right. Sarah, do you have anything more you'd like to add?
No, I just would like you guys to accept our tax money and help us keep our home.
Our children would like you to accept our tax money that is at the auditor's office and let us start to put our lives back together.
All right. Do we have any additional comments from Glendon? If so, if you do want to, I know we heard from you last week. But if you have any more, you might want to use the microphone at the podium if you care to.
I believe I've got a green light. Again, I'm Ken Norman. I'm the City Attorney for the city of Glendon. Obviously, this is a difficult decision for the county to make. It's not a decision for the city of Glendon to make. As I mentioned during our last appearance here, number one, this property does not have a certificate of occupancy. And so to call it a home at this stage is not entirely correct because nobody can live in that space unless and until it has a certificate of occupancy. This was a home that was moved from the south side of Highway 10 to the north side of Highway 10. And essentially, under Minnesota statutes, when a home is moved from one location to another, it must comply with all of the existing code requirements of the, you know, from building code. This property has never been brought into compliance. The inspections have never been completed. And that is the reason why it does not have a certificate of occupancy, even though separate building permits were provided to Darrell and to Sarah at the time that they applied. From the information that was put together by Wendy Affield, the clerk, that I think was shared with you, and Wendy is here with me in case anybody has any questions, you will note that there were two separate agreements with Clay County that the taxes were to be paid, requiring that the taxes be paid in a couple of separate years. That did not happen. This property was acquired back in 2014. And it started going delinquent in 2015. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. In looking at your request here, you have basically two requests. Your first request was to waive the penalties and interest and fees on your property. And the second one was a request for deferment or abatement for all or part of your property tax. In regards to the second one, first, we do not have the authority or the ability to do that in terms of abatement of taxes. We don't have that ability to do so. In terms of our, you know, just to let you know, in terms of our prior discussion last week, our concerns here are that this isn't a one-time situation in regard to penalties and interest involving your property in terms of history. And one of the things that we always take into consideration is what is the history involved with late payments? And, you know, so based on that, our board had moved to deny your request. That still, that still does not mean that, I don't know what the legal process for you is from this point on. I would assume that if you were to pay those penalties and those interest late fees, I would imagine there still is the process for you to still gain access to your property. But it would still be subject to the conditions that Mr. Norman talked about, too, where needing a certificate of occupancy, you'd have to work with the local government. I hope I'm explaining that correctly. You know, so, you know, that's been the board's position as of last week. I certainly, you know, we'll hear from you if you'd like. And then if any board member would like to change that, then we'd have to have a motion to do.
I can't access my property. They've had me locked out since 2019 after they first came to ask to reduce my taxes. They've been kicking us out since that year. In August, they put locks on my doors. And I haven't been able to access any of my personal belongings. I did give the check down to the auditor's office because Shannon told us that we had it until the end of April. And then we were told it was a few days late. So they do have our check for the taxes. We just.
The entire amount of 2020. We were just asking you maybe if somebody could forgive some of the penalties. We could put that money towards a person who's willing to excavate the site so that somebody from the city who's mature enough to come out and inspect what we've done and that they can turn our water. Because after penalties were forgiven in 2018, the spring of 2019, people were very aggressive. Mr. Norman would be the one. Or they made a payment arrangement with the county on their taxes. They didn't want to wait till the following year and have us not have any money. They wanted to do something to remove us from there. The building official allowed us to be in the property and was willing to give us a temporary certificate of occupancy. Mr. Norman took that letter that the building official gave to the city and did not show it to us, acted like he gave us a temporary option to do something. And he immediately, maybe we should bring the letter that he came and gave us because it was something the landlord wouldn't even give to somebody. Trying to evict us, just get out. We don't want you living here or anywhere nearby.
All right, so.
We just would like you to accept our tax money and let us move forward so we can have somebody excavate our site to do our water first before anything else.
I want to give Glendon an opportunity to be heard here.
I guess the reason I don't think we're here for all that other stuff, I think we're mainly here for the property taxes. And as you see on my second sheet there, I came in 2014 to the city of Glendon there. And until they were forced to do their first confession, they made a and then they were forced again to make their second confession because they didn't pay their property tax. They have never paid a penny on their property taxes unless they were forced. That's what we're here to talk about today, not everything else. And the $12,000 that check that they left for the county, as Lori had said last week, that was late. If they need to pay, it's going to be the $52,949, $30 because it's already in the forfeiture process. And that's the amount that actually needs to be paid, not the $12,000.
They've been waiting for our property being forfeited the entire time before even had a
Sir, if you could, you're going to have to wait to be called on, please. Because, don't interrupt. All right?
Oh, I mean, nobody has forced them not to make a payment on their property taxes since 2015. And when they, when they went to purchase or get the property from the auction, they knew that there was the $70,000 worth of property taxes that were going to be due on that piece of property. That wasn't something that was added after they, you know, got the piece of property. So, but they've never paid a penny unless they were forced. So, and we're going on, I'm going on my eighth year here now and stuff.
All right. Thank you for that. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. You know, we had, I believe we talked about this in 2018, like you'd said. And I think we did identify that it was a hardship and we're willing to work with you. And seeing that there was a payment schedule. And I think historically, what's difficult for us is that, you know, before, we'd, it was kind of the first time that this had happened. So this is why we had granted kind of some forgiveness of some of that other issues. But when it's just, you know, compounded over how many years, it's really hard to waive it based on COVID, since COVID was only this last year. I think that's where my difficulty is. And you have a beautiful family. You absolutely have a beautiful family. And I do know that there are some organizations that can work with families to help you with some of this stuff. I just don't know if it would be appropriate for us to waive it completely today.
So when I did sign my second confession of judgment, there was a note on there that said, you know, you pay this and then you're good through 2021. And so I didn't realize until just recently, I really wasn't good until through 2021. So then I had to come up with the taxes. And like I said, Shannon had told him we had until the end of the month. So we just want you to accept our money.
We don't even need anything waived. We would just like you to accept our money for those taxes.
They're just so pushy to get rid of us.
To pay in eight months. We pay $1,000 a month. And we have to make sure somebody else helps us install our water infrastructure, which is all installed. I'm going to have to pay somebody to excavate it so the city can look at it. When they should do that, that's what special assessments are for. We're not asking them to help us with anything. Get out of our way. Stop trying to force us out so you can take the property. Or you don't like a large family being on that street. We asked the city to put up signs. They've been upset ever since we made our first confession of judgment, the first payment we made with the tax office. And they come up with all kinds of outrageous things. I don't know if Mr. Norman just does that professionally or just doesn't like children.
It's all on the record. Everything is in their councilman. It's all over the internet about our family.
They talk badly about our family over the internet at their council meetings. Tell them you don't.
That's.
All we want is our money except.
I guess that's.
$52,000.
That's.
We have $12,000. And then I have another $8,000. If you'd like, I could pay the $12,000 from last year's taxes plus the payment that's due at the end of this year. I can pay that on June 1 instead of waiting till December.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Unfortunately, with the statute, citizens are only allowed to apply for two confessions. And that has taken place. And that's why we've, that they've moved forward with this process. The county did provide an opportunity to provide last year's payment or the most recent tax payment, three months late. And then again, another two months late. And so through the confession process, we've moved past the opportunity to be able to take $12,000 and $8,000. The requirement would be is that Mr. Peterson, or Ms. Peterson and Darrell would have to pay the entire amount.
There's no reason that they can't accept the $12,000 check that's been at the auditor's office. Shannon told me to wait until we were able to come before the Board of Commissioners. And she wanted it paid that day, either in full or if you reduced it by $500 or anything. But she wanted it that day, and the check's been up there. And the next, the other partial payment for the confession of judgment is due at the end of this year. I can pay that now, six months early.
And like I said, the paper, when they gave me the confession of judgment and said if I paid the $4,600, I was good through the year of 2021. So, but nobody would answer my questions when I sent that email back to.
Mr. Norman has said, we've never done anything with this home.
Nancy.
All of these children helped get the home there. We took it from the north side of Highway 10. It was Eddie and Ginny's Garden Center. Everybody goes to the lakes. I've saw it there for years. We moved it two blocks away within the same municipality. Under statutes and building codes, there's not, there's some things that you don't quite have to do. We were allowed to be in our home and then we were forced out secretly. They talked to everybody but us. They never talked to Ms. Peterson, ever.
They tell everybody they own our home.
Just like now. They've been, last, a Realtor was selling our neighbor's home. I called to ask how much they'd like for it. And she told me, oh, the city owns that big dilapidated house behind it. They told the people in the truck stop, they own that. We're going to clean it up and sell it in the spring. That was last year. They just want to be left alone. Please.
If you look on the two agreements that are in your papers that Sarah signed, I highlighted the spot where it says, along with the full amount of current taxes. So when she's saying she didn't know that there was supposed to be more on there, it is actually in the confession that she signed that she was supposed to be making the payment plus making sure that the current taxes were also paid that day. So it was in the paperwork that she signed.
And current taxes, cashier's check is at the auditor's office. A cashier's check. We brought that to them. We had $4 left in our bank. And the check has been there the entire time. A cashier's check.
The issue before this board is the request for waiver of penalties and interest. And that is the only thing that we have the ability to do here. And I'm just, I'm just saying that no matter the family, and there can be lots of reasons, but taxes still have to be paid. And when they're not, when they're not paid, there's consequences. And those consequences are penalties. And, you know, it's been the position of this board for many years that under certain circumstances, we're willing to grant relief. But we have not been willing to grant relief when there has been a history of late payment. And that's been the position of this board for a number of years. And like Commissioner Mojo said, you know, you've got lovely family and everything. But we have to make sure that what we do is fair to everybody, every taxpayer in Clay County. And every other, all other taxpayers have to pay their taxes and they have to pay them on time. And so that's the only issue before us. Your argument that you may have with the city of Glendon, whoever, that's not for us to be the judge and jury on here. So just so you're aware of that, I just need to make those.
Penalties and interest. And we were asking if you could waive them, but we don't even want you to waive them. And before, when you waived some penalties in 2018, she didn't even ask you to do that. So I would like you to accept our $12,000 for the taxes for 2020. And then we would like to pay those penalties that you waived because we didn't ask you to waive a couple thousand dollars. We have $80,000 in special assessments. And we don't have running water. We have to carry it, which is fine. But I'm in the process, working with the building inspector so somebody can help us move forward with our project and get our home completed and get our lives back together. They've been in a shambles since you waived the $2,000 in 2018. We'd like to just pay that. We'd like you to accept the money that's at the auditor's office. We don't want you to waive anything. These children would just like their home back and they'd like to feel safe there. They should be able to do that during a pandemic.
Can't even have our stuff.
Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. I think the reality is, the reason they didn't deposit the $12,000 is because that's not all that's due. And I mean, that's.
It is what's due.
For one calendar year.
Uh huh.
But the problem is, there is so much more from previous years that haven't been paid. And that's.
And that's what we're making a payment on. That payment I'll make, it's not due until the end of this year, 2021.
I, in normal, under normal circumstances, you're right. The rest of it wouldn't be required until the end of 2021. But because there is such a backlog of unpaid, it has to all be today. I mean, we do not have, as Steve said, we don't have the authority to take payments at this point.
But your employee told us we had until the end of the month. Why we didn't bring the check in, say, a week or two sooner. She said.
She said to have the cashier's check.
And then she was on vacation when we brought the check in.
Right, but there's some employees.
And she said that we needed to have the amount with the penalties because we can't guarantee that.
So the total amount with penalties today is what?
I think there's, I think they still have $52,000 outstanding.
I mean, that's the only thing that we can.
That is the back taxes. All we're trying to pay is the taxes for 2020 because there was an extension to pay them.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, as I mentioned, unfortunately, because they've utilized the two confessions, the full payment is what is due, not partial payments. And so that's where we're at. And so that's where we're at as far as that process. And so, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, we don't have the capability to accept a third confession because the statute doesn't allow that.
We're not asking for a third confession. We have a payment schedule in place. The $12,000 check isn't for that payment schedule. It's for the taxes of 2020, $12,000. For a property that we're told, get out of here. Go sit somewhere else. There's a pandemic going on. Just get out of here. Have you paid your special assessment taxes? You can't do anything unless you pay your taxes. And I'm not making this up. Everybody, even Mr. Olson, hollers across the lobby of the social service building, pay your taxes. And we pay them. The check for the year, not the payment plan that's already, we're in good standing with the payment plan. And when that's due is at the end of 2021. We were asking if you could waive penalties and interest in 2020. We're not even asking for the penalties to be waived.
Mr. Milton.
I think, Mr. Chair, I would just point out what you've already said to Ms. Peterson. The fact that what's here today before the board is, there's already been a motion, a second, and a vote to not waive the penalties. That's the only issue that's here before the board to decide. I don't know if the board is planning any other action at this point, but that's all. I mean, so we appreciate you coming here to discuss or bring those issues, you know, just so we're aware. But we're already aware of most of those anyway. But the only issue for the board to decide today is that issue in regard to penalties, which have not been waived, and I guess you're not even asking those to be waived. But I think beyond that, there's nothing else the board can do to hear today procedurally. So I just would give that to you again. We appreciate your information, but there's nothing else the board can do here today for you.
Mr. Milton, do you think, should I make a request, maybe so that the next meeting you could consider just accepting the money we have for 2020 and accepting our first payment on the confession of judgment? That's due December 31st of 2021, the first payment on the confession of judgment. We were hoping that you could waive penalties in 2020 for just that tax year. We're not even asking for that now because...
The board or myself, as attorney, county attorney, can advise you, give you legal advice as to what you may do next, your next steps. I think, as the board even said, you might work through with the city. But I guess I just want to point out, we're only here for this piece that the Mr. Chair has already pointed out. We appreciate your information, but there's nothing else the board's going to be able to do here other than look at that penalty piece, which they've already said they wouldn't waive.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. And I think, you know, we certainly do not have the ability nor do we want to tell you what other legal options you have to take. You'll have to do that on your own. But at this point in time, you know, based on the previous action, the board has determined that we would not waive the penalties and interest. So that, and that, you know, I don't see any commissioner here that's willing to revisit that. So thank you for coming and...
How about adding on the penalties you waived in 2018 because Mrs. Peterson didn't request that? The city came to you, and that upset a lot of people because you did that. That really made people work aggressively towards us.
Say that again.
12/27 of 2018, you waived penalties
Right.
in the amount of something, and she didn't request that you do that.
Well, we wouldn't have done it without a request.
We didn't even know about it until somebody showed us it. When they said they wanted to help us.
I know, I made that motion, and I made that motion because I knew it was a hardship. So I guess that... Wow, okay.
Made them work more aggressively towards us. When people were helping us with our home, they told them, don't help them. We're going to take...
Their issues with the city or something that it's... We don't have any control over that, so. Thank you for being here. But we do have other agenda items that we have to move on to, so.
So then, how long do I have and how do I get my items on my own?
Again, you'll have to check with somebody else regarding tax court issues or whatever because it's, that is, we don't have any way of giving you legal advice.
We're on, just meet with the council of the city of Glendon tomorrow, and then maybe I'll... I have heard your opinions on taxation and not being represented and then paying for housing. You know how much it costs for us to go on public housing in Clay County? A lot. I mean, imagine a family this size, and where are we going to rent? We brought ourselves up out of a two-bedroom home and put our home together ourselves. And we'll meet with the city council tomorrow and see how they...
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are now scheduled for a closed session, but before we do that, we're going to take a five-minute break. Point in time, we are scheduled to go into closed session, so is there a motion to...
Mr. Chair, maybe before the, maybe a point of order, just looking at the statute, I think, for the record, states that need to put on the record, this is pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3, parentheses C, which does allow for public meetings to be closed to discuss possible purchase prices for land and/or for considering possible offers or counteroffers for purchase of real property, which is what we're doing here. And so I just wanted to put that on the record.
All right, so the motion would include what he mentioned regarding statute. Is there a motion to close?
So moved to include the county attorney's information.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We are now in closed session. All right, we are back in session. After being in closed session regarding some property issues.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we allow Joe to go ahead with negotiating on a piece of property, looking at if it is available, how much, and moving date, and stuff like that. Like get him working on that.
I would second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion?
My only question is to clarify if there is an amount that we are starting at or if we just leave that.
I think that's up to Commissioner. I don't think there has to be. I think it's up to Commissioner Gross with the motion, but I don't think you have to have a specific number.
Well, I think right now we're just letting negotiation process before we can buy the building and then we have to bring it back.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Are we still moving ahead with bids for...
There's, at this point, there's no reason
Okay.
to pull those back. Any further discussion?
Call a question?
All right, we have a call for the question. I was going to make a comment, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to do that.
No.
You can make your comment. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I guess I, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this particular motion today. However, I have some real concerns moving forward with what may or may not transpire. So, but I don't think it hurts to gather the information, so I will support this motion today with some future concerns. So having said that, all in favor, unless there's any other comments, saying none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Okay, we have, I think we've done everything on our agenda, so we are adjourned.